Good evening, everyone. It's 6:00 PM and I'd like to call the August 23rd for the council meeting to order, please. Tonight we have Pastor Emily Christian. Tonight we have Pastor Emily Christian. Good restoration here, Dan.
Good evening. Father, in the name of Jesus, your word tells us that we are to pray for all those who are in authority over us, that we may lead a peaceful and quiet life. Father, right now, I pray over this council and this council meeting that as they deal with the agenda items that are before them, Father God, that you will give them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding as to how to deliberate for these results, Father God. We thank you for each and every council member. We thank you for the mayor of the city of Madison, and we thank you for the residents of the city of Madison, that as they come together and deliberate before you, Father God, that you will give them wisdom and you will help them to come to the decisions that are best for all involved. We thank you that everything shall be done with decency and in order, and we give you and you alone, Father, all the glory, honor, and praise, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have the roll call, please?
Here.
Councilmember, Congressman President Marsh Bartlet.
Here.
Councilmember Speaker.
Here.
Councilmember Powell.
Here.
Councilmember Teller. Councilmember Bartlett.
Here.
Dan Zane.
Yeah.
Councilmember Speaker first.
Thank you. Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll accept it for tonight. May I have a motion, please, for approval of the minutes from the August 16th meeting, please? Thank you. Any discussion?
I need to amend something to the minutes. In the portion that I was talking about where I supported Dr. Nichols, I would like to add, the masks were, the masks will mean fewer children and teachers are sent home due to be quarantined. The goal is to keep the highest possible number of children and teachers in the classroom. Virtual is good, and in-person, in-person learning is far superior.
Any other corrections, amendment, additions? Okay. May I have the roll call, please?
Aye.
Councilmember Speaker. Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Dan Zane.
Thank you. Now we have presentations and awards, and first up is the International Fire Protection for donation of standpipe training prop to the fire department. Chief Bailey?
We've actually got this prop outside, in the, in the front room there, just as you walk in. And this prop allows us, we've got 271 fire department connections, buildings that have fire department connections on them, and those supply the standpipes and the sprinkler systems. And our guys don't get a lot of training, don't get a lot of opportunities to train on those. So this, this certificate of appreciation is to International Fire Protection that built this prop for us and, and delivered it, and is helping us to understand and be ready. We do have to fight fire in a lot of our commercial or apartment buildings that, that have these connections. So I'm just going to read it real quick. This certificate of appreciation is presented to International Fire Protection Incorporated for the donation of a standpipe system prop. This prop will allow Madison Fire and Rescue to participate in practical hands-on training to become familiar and proficient with operating and supplying water to the standpipe systems that are built into many of our commercial occupancies. And this is Eddie Jet, and I'm going to let him introduce the rest of his crew.
I'm Eddie Jet, I'm with International Fire Protection, this is Brian Smith. The president of our company is standing back here, Jerry Allen, and this is Marsh Davis over here. It's on our behalf, it's a privilege to do this for you guys. And I just want you to know, and all the other emergency services to know, that International Fire Protection has your back. And, and man, this is, this is wonderful. We were grateful, appreciate you guys. All right.
Thank you very much, Chief Bailey and Madison Fire and Rescue, for all you do in keeping us safe. At this time, we have Mayor Finley, who is going to give a certificate of recognition to Mr. Cameron Cummings. Whoops.
But before he does, he's going to let Larry Benoy from the American Legion talk a little bit about the program and why we're giving these certificates.
All right. Many of you may know I was a city councilman, and I always got razzed a little bit about dragging out the meetings. I'll try to keep this brief, though. But yeah, I'm Larry Benoy, I'm the commander of American Legion Post 229 here in Madison, and also the District 12 commander, and I've got with me here today also Gene Downs, who is my vice commander and also president of the ladies auxiliary for our post. So the American Legion is divided into four pillars, Veterans Affairs and Rehabilitation, National Security, Americanism, which Boy's State and Boy's Nation falls under, and then Children and Youth. American Legion Boy's State was founded in 1935 and is among the most respected and selective educational programs of government instruction for the United States high school students, and it's for those that are growing, going from 11th grade into 12th, in which students become part of an operational, or part of the operation of local, county, state, and government, and state government. American Legion Auxiliary sponsors similar but program, but it's separate by, separated by, by the young ladies, and Gene will talk to that real quickly in just a second. At Boy's State, the participants learn the rights, privileges, and responsibilities of franchised citizens. The training is objective and centers on the structure of city, county, and state governments. Operated by students elected to various offices, Boy's State activities include legislative sessions, court proceedings, law enforcement presentations, assemblies, bands, courses, and recreational programs. Similarly, there is a program called Boy's Nation, where we select typically from a state two senators that are, that move forward to the Boy's Nation program, which is held in Washington, DC. And we've got, we're going to make a presentation to one of those who's actually elected to a very special positional chair on just a section, second. But the first Boy's Nation took place in 1936, and then, like I said, it typically has two representatives. We actually ended up with four this year for reasons I don't want to go too much detail on, but as you know, we had a pandemic event this, last year, and caused a ripple effect of, of participation. But anyway, two representatives from each of the 49 states, not including the state of Hawaii, who has a separate program, represents their states at Boy's Nation in Washington, DC, where the young leaders receive an education on the structure and function of federal government. At the event, each delegate acts as a senator from the Boy's State. The Young, the Young Long Winkers Caucus at the beginning of the session, then organize into committees and conduct hearings on bills submitted by the program delegates. Senators learn the proper methods of handling bills according to U.S. Senate rules. Participation in the political process is emphasized throughout the week and includes an organization of party conventions and nominating and electing a president and vice president. The week is, the week of government training also includes lectures, forums, forums, and visits to federal offices, national grounds, institutions, memorials, and historical sites. On Capitol Hill, Boy's Nation's senators meet with elected officials from their own states, and a number of the graduates have a, have been elected to public office, including presidents, congressmen, state governors, state legislators, and many others have been inspired to work for campaigns of individuals seeking public office. In 2019, we had countywide 79, 75 young men that participated at Boy's State. In 2020, we had 17. Of course, that was a COVID event, and what we did was carried over those that were reported into school, went to, went to Boy's State last year, actually went over and did it this year. So they actually went as seniors. And then we had 31 for 2021. And 2018, James Clemmons High School had the governor, elected governor, which is a very significant title and position that he was elected to. 2019, we also had a governor. That's the number one position, of course, in the good Boy's State. And then 2021, we'll talk about Camden and his great accomplishment. Scholarships are offered to all the young men that participate, and depending on your elected position, that scholarship can be quite substantial, including a, a full ride at one of the local, one of the state institutions. And of course, I want to congratulate each of these young men who are here tonight or, or future leader, future leaders and accomplishments that you did by participating in this week-long event. Gene, do you want to say a little bit about Girls Nation before I bring everybody up?
I will. So thank you, Mayor and council members, for having us tonight to honor these fine young men and women. I'm, this is the first year I'm the president of the auxiliary. This is the first year Madison was able to send girls to Girl State, and we had an amazing group of young women that went. And the process for the girls to get picked is a little different. So Larry mentioned there was 41 boys. For the girls, it's based on the population of the school and the size of the junior class. So even though we have really large high schools here, we were only allowed to select two girls to be delegates from Bob Jones and then two from James Clemmons. So we had a selection process. We evaluated the girls' demonstrated leadership. We looked at their academic achievements, their extracurricular activities. Very important for us was their volunteer service in the community, in their schools, in their churches. And in the end, we ended up with four amazing young ladies that represented Madison and their schools really well, and we'll introduce them in just a minute.
So, so what I've done is I've, so I've got, we've gotten eight, I believe, here tonight, and I'm going to bring each one of those up, and if you'll stand, stay up here when you get introduced. I've offered them an opportunity to say a sentence or so about what they did when they were at Boy's State. Some of them had elected positions or committee chair person positions, and if they want to share that, they can. If they don't want to, that's fine as well. Let's see, I got Jack Bell. Is Jack here? All right, Jack.
I had an amazing experience at Boy's State. First of all, I'd like to say I want to thank the American Legion for the amazing opportunity. It's a, it's a moment I'll never forget in my life, a week that I'll never forget. But while I was there, I was elected as the first alternate to governor for the state of Alabama at Boy's State, and I was awarded also the Citizenship and Integrity Medal. There was one of, there were, or one of 16 citizenship integrity medals.
All right. Sebastian Davis.
I also had a great time at Boy's State. I just want to say thank you to the American Legion for allowing me to go. Thank you.
All right. I've got Caleb Johnson.
Hey, my name is Caleb Johnson, and I'm really glad I got the opportunity to go to Boy's State this year. It was a really enriching experience, and I'm glad I got to go. While there, I was elected to the secretary of the National House of Representatives, Madison County Circuit Judge, and the state criminal appeals justice. Thank you, guys.
Roland Matthews.
My name is Roland Matthews, and although I didn't run for many positions, I sure did learn a lot, and I'd like to say thank you to the American Legion and my fellow delegates for making this an amazing experience.
All right, I got Aaron McNair. You here? All right. Kristen Rice.
Hello, my name is Kristen. I had an amazing time at Boy's State, and I ran for chairman and vice chairman.
Samuel Glover, I think his parents are there here tonight. They said they were going to come. He was off to college. He was one of the ones that took the second class, and he's off to Tuscaloosa right now. I just talked to him a couple days ago. So we'll get a certificate to him. And the same thing with Camden Grant. He's not here tonight. He's a, a community college going to class tonight. He's duly enrolled, but he couldn't make it as well. Now we got, I'm going to bring, Cameron, we'll bring you up in just a second, because we've got a special award for you. Hang tight.
Ladies, I'd like to introduce them one at a time. So from the James Clemmons junior class, Ms. Alana Spurling. Alana, she, well, went all out. She ran for governor. She ended up in the House of Representatives, so she served the House of Representatives during her time there. Our second candidate from James Clemmons was Sarah Beerbauer. She was elected to the state, the state Supreme Court Justice. Then from Bob Jones, Leah Lesman. She was elected to the State Board of Education. And then finally, Gillian Pennell from, from Bob Jones. She ran for governor. She served on the House of Representatives, and very importantly, she won the Good Citizen Award. So we're very proud of Gillian and all the girls. Gillian, say just a couple words on behalf of the girls.
Okay. First off, I just want to say thank you to the American Legion Auxiliary for selecting me to go from Bob Jones. It was, I had dreamed of going for about three years before we went, and I'm already going to cry. But the first week, or the week before Girl State, I had began my campaign early. We bought posters, we bought buttons. We started getting really excited about what I was going to do when I got there. Wow, I'm already crying. Like I said, it was one of the best weeks of my life. Like, it really was. So I began my governor campaign really early, bright and early on a Monday morning at 6:00 AM, going door-to-door, meeting all the girls from all 67 counties of our state. And this was in preparation for the Nationalist Party primaries. This was the first time I had the opportunity to speak about my party platform and about 400 girls. It was a really daunting experience. I had never spoken in front of that many people before. So I campaigned off of a party platform that we came up with that night before that was centered around accessibility for all Alabamians, and this included accessibility to healthcare, education, and employment, bringing industry to our state. So I ended up losing this election, but I think, and I think the other governor candidates, like Alana would agree, like this was, we learned so much more from the campaign than we did from winning the position of governor. And my roommate actually ended up being the governor, so that was. But otherwise, we had an amazing opportunity to hear from women in leadership across our state, including like CEOs, government, government officials, and other women that just had so many stories to tell us. And it was funny that a lot of them had faith based at their success in life. And it was just great to meet all these role models. And as tired as we were going off of like three hours of sleep every night, we were all there having a great time, singing songs, meeting all the other girls in our state, and really just getting to hear what everybody else's life was like, from their counties, from their cities. What's it, what's it like at your school? And yeah, like I said, it was one of the most amazing weeks of my life. So, thank you so much.
So I would like to bring Cameron Cummings next. Here, sir? Yes, that would be great. Yeah, if you want to read that certificate, that'd be great. As a matter of fact, we probably could read one of those certificates that everybody got as well. Okay.
This is an honor. I am so impressed by everything that you've accomplished. I think it is amazing that you were allowed to, you selected to go to Boy's Nation and then do so well. This man was elected vice president at Boy's Nation, and that's a huge accomplishment.
City of Madison, certificate of recognition. This certificate is awarded to Cameron Cummings for representing Alabama at Boy's Nation in Washington, DC, by first participating in Boy's State at the University of Alabama, where he earned a senator slot, which then qualified him to attend Boy's Nation in July of 2021, where he was elected as vice president to the Boy's Nation program. Congratulations, and thank you for proudly representing our city and Bob Jones High School.
How's it going, doing? My name's Cameron Cummings. I'm now senior at Bob Jones High School. And like she said, I had the distinct honor and privilege to go to Boy's Nation, to go to Boy's State and Boy's Nation. I was sponsored to go down there by the Huntsville Capital League, so I still give all my thanks out to them, as well as the American Legion, for hosting this program. When I went down there, we were in a special situation, like Mr. Benoy said. The state of Michigan did not have a Boy's State program allowing Alabama to win a lottery for the two extra seats. Those two seats were offered as a senator campaign. I thought I was going to maybe take the easy road and run for senator, less competition. Actually, it was just as much, if not more, competition. People had the same idea I did. I guess it wasn't that original. But nonetheless, I got a strong backing of my friends and close people that I've became associated with and still talk to this day. And they've allowed me to push me forward. I got to know people. I've had a lot of good, fun little quirks and gimmicks we used to push myself further in the election and allow myself to win Boy's Nation. Up there was a completely different crowd, because I knew everyone there deserved to be there. They won their elections, and they knew what they were talking about. I decided to run for vice president, because I knew I went lax at Boy's State, but decided if I was given the distinct privilege to go down there, I was going to give my best and go for the highest position possible. I ran for vice president. I came down to meet in the other Alabama senator. My roommate, we ran against each other in the final election, gave a debate. That was one of my first public debates I've ever given, and I can say it was an experience I'll never forget, winning that election, and not only just the fact of winning, but knowing that I had, sorry, 78 people behind me, 78 people behind me, knowing, thinking that I was the right candidate for the job was something that I'll never forget. An experience that I'm so glad I got the chance to have. Thank you, everyone, and thank you to the American Legion.
First and foremost, I want to first thank, we have school board members, we have our superintendent, we have three of our school board members. You know, this, most everyone on city council right now is glad that we'll be out of office before this crew's ready to run. I want to thank Larry and the American Legion, Gene, you know, one of the things that, I give Larry a hard time, but one of the things they've done is truly revitalized the American Legion and so many of the great programs that they do. And, and I'm so proud, and one of the things as a council member that we're trying to do, when we talk about improving quality of life, it's making sure that we have the ability for these kids to come back to this area, because you can hear the quality that's in these kids in our schools, and when they can come back to a job and make this community even better and take us to the next level, that's what we're headed to do. So on behalf of our city council, to each and every one of you guys, congratulations. We are so proud of you and so happy to recognize you guys tonight.
We'll, we'll meet outside and get some pictures, if you don't mind, because I might not see you again as a group. So, but thank you, crowd, for showing, sharing a few minutes with us and sharing our story. This is a great program. If you know some youth that are getting ready to, that are in high school and are, they're all eligible to participate, I invite you to bring them out there. I believe every parent and everyone in the court should, this is a great program, so please consider it as a great leadership opportunity for these young, young people.
Thank you all so much. Our future is in great hands, and we appreciate the wonderful representation that you gave for our city. Thank you all so much. Moving on, we now have our Partnership for Drug-Free Community with Anne Marie Martin and Partnership for Youth Tobacco and Vaping Prevention. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to share this information. You know, when you're going up against big tobacco companies with multimillion-dollar ad campaigns to spread, you know, disinformation about their products, or at least to not let you know how really bad they are, you've got to get creative and you have to focus on the facts, including definitions. These are electronic cigarettes. They're all electronic cigarettes. The Jules, very popular non-disposable vapes, the POPS.
The Jules, very popular non-disposable vapes, the Pops, the puff bars, these are all electronic cigarettes. And the label on the package says it contains nicotine, but a lot of people don't really understand exactly how much and what that really means. So, one pack of cigarettes, twenty cigarettes, about twenty milligrams of nicotine. One Juul pod, it can have as many as two packs worth of cigarettes of nicotine in there, just one pod. And right here, one of the disposable vapes that are very popular with the kids, two and a half packs of nicotine there, of cigarettes worth of nicotine. And it's a very highly addictive form, very concentrated. Swarin is another, um, pod-based system, has up to ninety cigarettes worth of nicotine. So, all of these pod-based systems, the ones that are so popular with the kids, they do contain very high levels of nicotine. And so nicotine, um, it can rewire and change your brain. That's what we tell the kids when we talk to them. And especially teenagers and young adults, it changes their brain because it's a highly addictive drug. It convinces your brain that you need it to survive. It also hits your heart, fight or flight response. Nicotine alone can also hurt your lungs, make it more difficult to breathe. It even increases acid reflux. Nicotine affects every single system in your body. And the flavoring chemicals. There are thousands and thousands of flavoring chemicals in these disposable vapes. Um, this is what attracts the kids. They're sweet, they smell good, but the chemicals themselves can be a really big problem. I mean, there are thousands of different flavors. But researchers have found that these flavoring chemicals can cause damage to the heart and the lungs just themselves. So, you know, the good news is the Alabama Department of Public Health, uh, has, um, quit now Alabama to help people stop tobacco products. Um, and now, we, this is what our program is basically about. We have been talking to hundreds of students and adults in Madison, Huntsville, Madison City for the last year, uh, Madison County. And also, we have a youth tobacco, uh, uh, a youth advocacy group. It's called Today's Youth, Tomorrow's Leaders. And they put together an exhibit called airing out Big Tobacco's Dirty Laundry. In the spring and summer, it's been in local schools, uh, it was in Bob Jones, uh, James Clemmons, uh, Liberty and Discovery. Uh, it was at the Madison Library. Right now, it's at Trianna. And it highlights the industry's deceptive practices and lets people know exactly how dangerous these products are. And, um, according to, um, our figures from schools and libraries, tens of thousands of residents have seen these exhibits, uh, spring and summer. So, um, our whole point of this is to let people know that we are promoting a one-hundred percent tobacco-free policy for our schools and why that's so very, very important. Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Martin, for being here tonight and sharing this worthwhile program. Now, it's time for public comments, and if there's anyone that would like to address council, I would just ask that you give your name. And if you know your district, uh, it would be helpful, should council want to follow up with you, or if you're not sure what your district number is, if you can maybe just say your neighborhood. Um, we appreciate that. No one has signed up ahead of time, so anyone who would like to address, Ms. Beebe, raise your hand. Uh, feel free to come up. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm gonna read this because my mind seems to wander. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I'm just gonna mention some things that I went here at the last meeting and, uh, that I would have mentioned then. Uh, in the meantime, I was stopped by, right by a train at the railroad track downtown the other day. I stayed there about seven minutes, seven or eight minutes, got sick and tired of it, left, went around, went around this way, came back in. It was still there. It was there blocking at least twenty to thirty minutes. I had ordered, I was going to eat. I had ordered by, before it left. I think there's a rule or ordinance or somehow or another that, that, uh, trains cannot block an intersection, but so long. But it was, it was terrible. As soon as that thing moved, Main Street filled up. Everybody was in line trying to get in. I don't know what that is, but I wish somebody would look into it. And another thing that came up at the meeting was the five million dollars that you all are gonna get pertaining to COVID. Having just gotten over COVID, I realized what helps and what doesn't help. And, uh, I think it's great that you're getting a lot of that money, but I think most of that money should go to the hospitals, which is why the work was done to help. Uh, especially no laptops. That was on the agenda last week. I don't know anything in the world what a laptop has to do with COVID. Uh, I realized that that was, there were, uh, uh, officers that, that were probably quarantined and this, that, and the other, and you had to have, uh, people come in and work over. I know there's monies done, but, uh, luckily, I did not need to call, uh, nine-one-one to go to the hospital. And I'm sure people have, and those vehicles have to be cleaned. But I would like for the council, uh, as they spend this money, to report to the public exactly how it's being spent. Because I don't think, the very first thing I saw was laptops. Laptops don't have a thing to do with COVID. Okay, another thing. God, I see. Uh, the, having to sign up for public hearings and public comments is, uh, you know, this is the only place twice a, twice a month that the public, this is a public meeting, public people come here to talk to you all. They, high-farm are not gonna know to, to call up and, uh, do that thing. I haven't done it for, not for fifty years, and I'm not gonna start doing it now. Uh, this is the public. That's why the public comes and talks to you all. You're trying to, uh, get too much control over the public. I think the public has every right to come here and talk to you all without signing up. Oh, I'm in District Seven. Sorry about that. You all know who I am. Uh, but that, that was bad, too. Also, in the process of reading all this about the changing of the government, if you don't mind me going over, I'd appreciate it. Since I missed last meeting, you know, my mind's not all together yet. But anyway, about changing the form of government, in reading back on some of the things that were written here, it mentions city administrator, and it mentioned that Taylor was the city administrator. Now, I don't know whether he was or not. I think those people are mayor's aides. I don't know when it was formed, but as long as I can remember, that the, uh, when the, when we moved to this building, the mayor had an aide down there. I don't know when that was approved. I'd like to know. But, uh, uh, I know, I don't know whether Taylor was a city administrator or not, but I doubt if he was approved by the council, and to me, the city administrator has to be approved by the council. And when we had our recall way back in the eighties, one of the reasons we had it was because the council, the, the commission, it's a commission, the commission had gotten a, a, a city manager who was terrible. I mean, no, the, the public didn't know anything about it. Uh, but I would just like to know about, um, what Taylor and Steve are. If they are mayor's aides or if they are city administrators. Uh, and I'd like to know the salary. But I'd appreciate, uh, appreciate some answers to some of those questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Beebe. Is there anyone else that would like to address council? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Jocelyn Brewer, Taylor's Crossing Subdivision, District Four. Um, I wanted to publicly say thank you for the time and effort put forth towards the written minutes that were approved tonight for the public comment section. I would like to address, uh, also address two items on the agenda tonight. Ordinance 2021-269, Amending Rules Governing City Council Procedure, First Reading. I would like to see the words on paper in the new ordinance that will replace what is redlined in the previous ordinance on page thirty-eight in the agenda packet. Not having those words in the ordinance puts the citizens behind on speaking here about it and voicing our concerns. I've heard this council mayor say they wish people would be more engaged and involved in local government. Well, they are citizens, but they can't always be here and present on a Monday night at 6:00 p.m. You now have a local group that cares so much, they even started a transparency petition with ASKS. And many are on board with this. Currently, there are two-hundred-and-sixty signatures. In fact, most people I talked to were surprised when they found video, found out that videos of the meetings were not available indefinitely. Let's not take steps backwards now that you are finally getting engagement from the public. I believe five minutes for public comments should not be cut down to three. When an effort is put forth to research a topic, and it is important to me, I ask for five minutes. It's no problem to plan ahead and take even that extra time to send an email for the request. You have said in the past, you have to show up, and we have when we can. Now I hear about making emails just as important as showing up. Please think about this change. I do believe if you show up, it should be noted and hold some type of weight. The second agenda item is Resolution Number 2021-264R, authorizing the purchase of a Ring central phone system. We've been told the reason videos can't be archived indefinitely or all public meetings can't be livestreamed is cost. Now you have a line item on the agenda tonight with a total cost of one-hundred forty-three thousand, four-hundred fifty-three dollars and thirty-two cents coming out of the IT budget. I hope the taxpayers will get more details on this tonight and not just the bill. I hope this will be a good thing for the public and improves transparency and accountability, which many here ran their campaigns on. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else that would like to address council? Yes, ma'am.
Highland Drive, Ashley Estates, District Five. I'm taking this opportunity to submit to you that I strenuously support livestreaming, recording, and archiving all public meetings for in perpetuity, including livestreaming and archiving planning commission and working sessions. A virtual option to submit public comments is an eminently reasonable accommodation for residents who cannot appear inside the public building in person. We already have the technology. After all, we are all still experiencing a significant outbreak of COVID-19. Now, more than ever, we all need more transparency. There's a lot going on here in Madison, and a short summary in the regular minutes oftentimes omits pertinent information. I would not be here today asking for recording and archiving of meetings if I had received prompt and more precise answers to questions I asked eight months ago. Uh, people need to know what's happening in their communities. It's public business. A transparent government equals a legitimate government. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
So I'm just piggybacking off of what they are talking about, about transparency in government. And I was one of those who was shocked that it's not already livestreamed.
Ma'am, I'm sorry to interrupt. Do you mind just giving your name just for?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're fine.
Leshy Oaklue, District Six. Um, so, so basically, um, I'm just advocating for that livestreaming and archiving. And, um, in my very brief research, of course Huntsville livestreams their, um, city council meetings. Um, I'm not actually sure about public commentary, but as we see Madison grow, it's growing a whole lot. You're gonna bring people in from all over, and you want people to feel engaged, to be able to, you know, talk about issues they're facing in their respective neighborhoods, uh, whatever that may be. So, I don't know if these numbers are accurate, but, um, I think you guys can correct me. If Madison is at a little over fifty thousand now? Okay, so I found a couple other places like Wilmington, North Carolina, Seattle, Washington, Austin, Texas, um, Newton, um, San Antonio, Texas. And there was even a smaller city of Caryville, Texas, only has twenty-four thousand, um, in their population, and they actually archive their, um, city council meetings. So, um, with a city of this size that is growing even more and more, we should really consider archiving, making it accessible for people to, um, comment. And like the mayor was just talking about, the young people who are up here, they are the future and laying the groundwork for them. You know, they are tech-savvy people. No one, not everybody's gonna be able to be here in person. They're gonna probably look for ways to make it, make it accessible for the community to offer feedback, talk, and not have to be here in person. And I know I struggle to be here. I have two little kids, so it's, it's hard. So if it was, if there was a way to engage effectively, and I saw you guys do that a couple of months back, try to, and it, it was complicated, but I think the more you do it, um, the smoother it will be over time. It's trying to engage people, trying to allow people to participate from their homes. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else? Seeing no others, we'll close public comments and move into consent agenda and finance committee report, please.
Finance committee met this evening. Um, we went over the, the weekly, or, uh, the bills, um, for this session. Everything was a whirl. I think we had a couple of questions that were answered in the meeting. Um, we also, um, saw that everything was in line, and we had two donations. John, you want to talk about that?
Sure.
And with those, I'd like to make a motion.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? May I get the roll, roll call, please?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert? Council President Pro Tem Mara Robeski?
Aye. It'll hurt.
Member Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Very good. Okay, that's approved, and now we'll move into presentation reports, and first up, Mayor Finley.
All right, and I'm gonna let Samantha take the lead and just give a couple of brief, uh, ideas on next steps.
Sure. Okay, so you guys know that we are up for a web re-hall. Um, so that is coming soon. We've already paid that. We've been in discussion with Civic Plus, so we will continue that, Jason and I, as an initial step. But then we will also be pulling a point person from each department to help with the design and tell us what we need from each singular department. Um, so as we go on, uh, we will also be publishing a survey that we're pushing out to the community tomorrow. And that's gonna get some general feedback from everyone and kind of learn what, what's working well and what's not working, and how can we implement that into our redesign. So another idea that we are using is we are, uh, reaching out to our school system. And I've already talked with Daniel Witt via email on this. So, uh, hopefully, if, if they're on board, we want to include the students in this, get their feedback and see what they would like to do. Maybe make it a little research project for them where they can come back and report to you guys what they see as current trends, um, what they see works in web design moving forward. So we want this to be a redesign that holds for a length of time and stays current for all our users. Um, so as we do that, you know, we'll be, again, pushing this out to the community, making it a collaborative experience. So, do you guys have any questions?
I do. Um, are you gonna do like a news flash or something about the survey?
Yes, absolutely. That will go out. Um, we'll do a press release as well, out to the news stations to get them involved. But then also, it'll be hosted on our website, social media, across the board.
Perfect. Thank you.
Great. Anything else?
Thank you, Samantha.
That's all I have.
Oh, really? Okay, very good. We're gonna change it up a little bit tonight and start with District Number Seven. Councilmember Seifert, please, sir. Okay, uh, District Number Six, Councilmember Denzine?
I only have one thing to bring up. Uh, last week, I spent three hours talking to Chief Gandy. It was very, very educational. I really enjoyed getting to know him better. We covered a lot of topics in that amount of time. Didn't plan to be there. a lot of topics in that amount of time. Didn't plan to be there that long, but we just really got along, and I am very proud that he has, that he has come and joined us in Madison. I think he will be an excellent addition to our city, and will be an excellent chief. I just want to thank you for, for coming here. And did your wife join you tonight? Is she in town? Okay, well, pass along our, our well wishes to her while she is here, and if there's anything we can do to make her stay better, please let us know. All right, that's all I have.
Yes, ma'am. District Number Five, Councilmember Bartlet, please.
First, I'd like to thank Chief Gandy for appearing and answering questions during a meet and greet last Tuesday night in District Five. Everyone I spoke to afterwards had high praise and were very impressed with the way you answered some pretty tough questions, and so I was impressed as well. Thank you so much, chief. My shop local spotlight is at Toyota Field, the Junkyard Team Store. I hope that everyone realizes in Madison that you can purchase Trash Panda merchandise right here in Madison where we receive the benefits of the sales tax, so you don't have to go to Ridge Street. And so I purchased some Trash Panda gifts for some of my friends in Huntsville, and I made sure I did it right here in Madison, so I want to remind you to do that as well. I'm going to give a tiger team update and discuss the first reading on the ordinance that was mentioned during public comments, and Councilmember Seifert and I are on the tiger team, and John, feel free to jump in if I leave anything out or anything you want to add. First of all, the purpose. Council President Shaw asked and put this team together to make recommendations to more easily allow access and accommodations under the Open Meetings Act when virtual meetings are no longer allowed. And one of the recommendations that we had after we met and then we shared in the work session last week was to remove rules concerning public comments from the ordinance that you see tonight for first reading, and to move that language to a policy with a resolution to be presented at the next city council meeting. So at this meeting, we needed a first reading to show the language that was going to be excised, and Ms. Brewer, you had asked about what language it's going to be replaced with. If you will look at the meeting agenda packet, you will see an updated version of the resolution that will be discussed. And in the meantime, we hope that members of the public will read the agenda packet and send us feedback in terms of what is being proposed, although we discussed it at the work session last week. But let me hit a few highlights in terms of what's in the packet and what's in the proposed resolution. We have tried to consolidate all public comments to three minutes, but there's no need to reserve time in advance. And Jason Coley demonstrated a texting SMS option for signing up for comments, but Councilmember Seifert also suggested having cards, sort of like in your views at church, and you can sign in if you want to speak and you don't want to text to sign up, so that we will have an order for the comments. We also are proposing five minutes for all public hearings, and additional time for those proposing the action in the first place. Public comments will remain at the beginning of the meeting and on any topic. Additional methods of participating by public comments, including signing up on the text system or emailing all council and setting up a button on our website so that your message can come to every one of us when you have something to say about a topic, or leaving a voicemail for all council, so you can call and it will go to all of us. Public hearing comments may also be submitted in writing, and a synopsis of those comments will be included in the minutes. And the minutes will reflect actions taken by council and positions for and against matters that are subject of the public hearings, but minutes are not transcripts of meetings, so they will not have that level of detail. Now, the tiger team continues to research and gather information and best practices regarding archiving videos and closed captioning options. We are currently livestreaming. That has not stopped, but we are still looking at that piece of the assignment that has been given to us, but we wanted to present what we could with regarding public comments and public hearings first, and then we will report back as we continue to do our research to the full council, probably in a work session format just like before, and then we will present our findings at a council meeting. John, did I leave anything out that needed to be mentioned?
I'm sorry, I'm just getting through all the problems I could more effectively. I mean, here's the law, and what does it not have to, you know, get your own part sometimes by the authority to sign up, which is yet, as many people need to treat possible. Um, you know, we're in it, we're done, and we need a theater public speaking, probably at a lifetime. Um, and so, you know, it's kind of, you know, kind of get, where is inside comments to us? The other part is, you know, the public comments, you have a time for all, the ILO, they want to figure you are in the right situation. Um, and some actually, many times, where it's going to take us, we've got the answers, they won't get that. Um, and then we'll do that. There's not time for like the ILO, there's time for us to hear, and you know, all the, they're nine million, nine more accessible, beginning in the history of the company, that is, that's all. And then having additional time, like company, while it's in for other periods, uh, where it, it's a different walking depth issue, it's going to, it's going to, um, plenty of hours, that's, that's what we're trying to go with, which is part of it, as well, the cars, you know, I mean, not everybody has a smartphone, or maybe you don't want to get, you have to get home from here. But the idea is, you need to do that, you, uh, council president, the head of that, for the part, uh, you need to follow the part, uh, you kind of keep your information there, and, uh, but, we want to study out, and we want to be able to make sure, and I should be here, and others, and I should help, and all that, that's all.
And I, I just thought of one additional thing that we did recommend. We had received a number of comments from the public asking not to have to reveal their personal home address when they stand up to speak, so we have recommended removing that requirement, but asking you to let us know your district or your neighborhood, just so we can help follow up if we need to and address your issues. So I think we were being responsive to that concern as well. And that's all I have.
Yes, ma'am. Very good. Council District Number Three, Mr. Powell?
You're going to cover the first reading?
You're not going to do the update on the policy draft? Because you have two items under your name.
She did that.
She did that. That was the second part.
The one was the first reading, and then she gave an update on it.
Okay, well, then, I'm sorry, I needed, I wanted to add something to that part. I guess I spaced hers.
But we, we can't vote.
Um, the, when we were at the, with President Pro Tem Robleski, and Councilmember Bartlet and I were at the ALM conference this summer, they had a, in one of their training sessions, they had something about recording of meetings by people that were not city employees. And they suggested that you may want to have a rule that would state that the council may designate an area from which this recording could be made, because there could be times when you have many people that are there with a cellphone or tripod or something that could potentially impede somebody else's view, or that could become distracting by, and they suggested that by having a designated area, or at least the ability to have a designated area, you might prevent some of that from happening. So my suggestion would be in the bullet that said individuals wishing to video or audiotape, or audio record, sorry, that we just put a bullet that says council may designate an area for recording devices or, or from which recordings may be made, or something to that effect. Doesn't mean we have to. It just means that should they become an issue and start distracting or detracting from the meetings, then we could do that, and it would be spelled out so that there wouldn't be any question.
Mm-hmm.
I, I spaced my time. I'm, we're on Teddy's time now.
We got it. It's the first reading, so we'll take that into account.
I wrote it down.
Yep.
Very good. All righty.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Powell, anything else?
No, I just, I do want to thank Jason. I mean, he's, he's done a tremendous job with, with, you know, this whole gear and those type things. And I think one thing we have to keep in mind, that's not his only job. One of the important things he does is cybersecurity, which is a huge, huge thing this day and age. So I just, I want to thank him for that and all the other things that he, that he does, and, and that's, that's really all I've got for this evening.
Yes, sir. Council District Number Two, Councilmember Spears?
Yeah, it's probably my husband's fault that I spaced there for a minute while you were talking about that, because he sent me a text. It said, "The closed captioning tonight is much better."
Very good.
Good job, Jason. Thank you. Also, I wanted to mention that President Pro Tem Robleski, and I attended the ALM Fifth Congressional District Luncheon in Athens this past week, and were able to meet with several different officials from different cities or in the area, and Congressman Brooks spoke. Also, last week, I attended the Madison Utilities meeting. We're still working on Highland. We're still trying to get more people over there to help with it. And tomorrow, I will be attending a virtual meeting of TARCOG, which is the top of Alabama Regional Council of Governments. And also today, big news, the Pfizer vaccine was approved by the FDA today. And I would like to encourage everybody to consider doing more research now that this has been approved, and please consider getting vaccinated if you have not already been vaccinated. Also, would encourage you to wear a mask when you cannot be social distance. With the Delta variant out there, it is very, very contagious. We know of many people who have been vaccinated who have still gotten the Delta variant, usually not as bad a case as somebody who's not vaccinated. But I would just encourage you to do more research now that this new information is available, and then I would also encourage you to please consider wearing a mask. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I also attended the monthly McDab meeting, Cemetery Committee meeting, and Friends of the Library Committee meeting, and with Councilmember Spears, went to the congressional update. And then another meeting I attended, which was very interesting, which was the Alabama Public Awareness Cooperative Training, or APACT, held a virtual meeting via Zoom that was sponsored by Huntsville Utilities, where we were able to learn about safety with regard to pipeline, and I want to thank them for sponsoring that. And then my last shout out is a huge thanks to our police department for everything that they are doing in the Franklin Station subdivision. As many are aware, that is our first detour that we have had for the roundabout, and it's really shaken some people out, that they can't go forty miles an hour through the subdivision. And I had one Franklin Station member text me and say, "Thank you so much. I think we'll be able to pay for the roundabout through these tickets." So I, as I was coming home from church yesterday, somebody went right through the stop sign. And I just want to thank MPD for being there, being so conscientious. The speed trailer is up at the pool, so it's a reminder. MPD is there. They are there for safety. It is a neighborhood with many children. I would encourage you to please keep it under twenty-five. Please stop at the four-way stop sign, and just keep everyone safe. And again, I, I can't tell you how many Franklin Station residents, including the one to your left, is so grateful for the support in keeping that neighborhood safe during the detour. And that's all I have. And so now, we will move into department reports. Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Board and committee appointments, and I actually have the first one as part of the Cemetery Committee. I'd like to request reappointment for Reverend Matthews to place nine on the Municipal Cemeteries Committee with a term expiration date of May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. And are there any others? We will accept, there being none, we will accept Reverend Matthews by acclamation. And then next is Brian Goodwin to the Beautification Tree Board. I believe that's yours. Councilmember Denzine?
Yes, it is. I would like to appoint him to the Beautification Board, place number fifteen. He has a term expiration of November of twenty-twenty-two. Joined us in the last meeting. He had so many good ideas. I think he'll be an excellent member of the committee, and I, and I welcome him in, assuming he is appointed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Are there any other nominees? There being none, we will appoint Mr. Goodwin to place fifteen. Our third appointment is for Mr. David Smart to the Construction Board of Appeals, alternate two position, and I don't believe that there's a council liaison for that position, unless, is it?
It's mine.
Is it yours, Teddy? Okay.
Yeah, it's mine, but you've announced it, and.
Okay. And, okay, so Teddy has made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Are there any other nominees? There being none, we'll accept Mr. Smart to that place with an expiration date of July twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Now it's time for public hearings. We have Cameron with revenue.
Uh, we've got two public hearings this evening. The first is a request from Rebertha Incorporated Doing Businesses' Mo's Original Barbecue. They requested a restaurant retail liquor license for their location at one oh-two St. Louis Street, Suite A. That's down there in Town, Madison. The police department has signed off on this request, but as you can see, the building's still under construction, so fire and building haven't signed off. So the recommendation is the consent be given, and we'll have the local license contingent on the administrative occupancy.
Very good.
Approve.
Well, yeah, at this time, we'll open up the public hearing if there's anyone that would like to address that. Otherwise, we will entertain a motion.
Close the hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. And there being none to speak, we close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. May I have the roll call, please? Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Council President Pro Tem Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Thank you. The second.
Motion approved. I'm sorry, motion approved.
Roll. Keep going.
Yes.
All right. The second public hearing we have is a request from Sunnyside Incorporated Doing Businesses' Eggs Up Grill. They've requested an on- or off-premise wine license for the location at three hundred Hughes Road, Unit K. This is a new request for alcoholic beverages at that location. That's up there just a little bit south of the Publix on Hughes Road. As you can see, there is some construction still going on there, so the police department signed off, but building and fire has not. And I'd go with the same recommendation as the last one.
Very good. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing, see if there's anyone here that would like to speak on this topic. There being none, I close the public hearing and make a motion for.
Make a motion.
I'm sorry.
Move.
Okay. Okay, having that motion and a second. May I have the vote, please? Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert? Council President Pro Tem Robleski?
Aye.
Council President Shaw? Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Very good. Very good. Thank you, sir. Next up is Engineering, Mr. Griffin.
Uh, yes, ma'am. The first one we have tonight is the approving the use, uh, resolution number is twenty twenty-one two two eight R. It's the use of the gas tax fund for the Bowers Road project. And what this is, is a, pretty much a rehabilitation and reconstruction and overlay for Bowers Road. The roadway has experienced a lot of use, and it probably won't make it through a couple more winters. So Public Works will do the reconstruction efforts on the areas that are bad, and then we will use the county contract to overlay the roadway, turn it back to the original condition.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Uh, I've got a question. In the resolution, it says that this is being proposed in coordination with the Limestone County Commission. Are they pitching in funds, or?
That is using their contract, basically. Their paving contract.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. I'm aware.
I'm aware of how we do it in Madison County. I didn't know with the way this was worded, whether in coordination, they were going to use their gas tax money, or?
No, ma'am. And so I've looked at a couple of options, and if we do a paving contract for three years, which is about as long as you can get with a government contract, and include most of our projects that we would like reservicing, I feel that Madison doesn't have enough quantity to justify our own paving contract. So a good time to do that would be in the fall, um, when weather starts getting rough, you have a lot of people who put pencil to paper in the office and get us some good numbers. Um, I think it's time that we have our own paving contract, instead of in lieu of using other people, basically waiting on their timetable.
I like that thought. Um, what is the total cost of this road? Is this going to cover all of it?
Uh, yes, ma'am. It will cover the entire reconstruction effort that we will have on roadbed rehabilitation, and then overlay itself. So you'll get a fresh new top with the areas that have failed already. If you've ridden on the road on the outside shoulder, it'll be replaced and brought back to standard operation.
Okay.
And do you have a total cost for that, sir?
Oh, yes, ma'am. I think it was roughly $400,000, I believe, that we had aligned, but I'll double-check that figure.
Okay, very good, thank you.
It's ringing around in my head right now.
That's okay. Thank you, I appreciate that. May I have the vote, please? Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Protem Robleski?
Aye.
Council President Shaw? Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert? Very good. Motion passes.
Yes, ma'am. The next item is Resolution Number 2021-259-R. This is authorizing the mayor to execute our updated MS4 Stormwater Management Program Plan. Um, this is a five-year plan required by ADM. We go through these five-year cycles that gets us into our new permit. It does come with some changes. I will update council with those changes. Uh, ADM likes to change them pretty frequently, but the gist of it is, they would like more feedback on their programs, see what they are putting out there and what we are getting in return, basically. As you're aware, we do collect a stormwater fee. So with that stormwater fee, those, they were pretty much tracking water quality with those issues. Um, Ms. Beebe did ask, but it's municipal separate systems sewer system, if you want to know what MS4 stands for, but I just wanted to let her know, reiterate, that's what it stands for, so.
Very good. And do you have a cost for that as well?
Uh, no, ma'am, I do not. That is collected annually.
Okay.
And so out of that annual budget, we do our projects for MS4 out of it. And typically, and it has gone down this year, and we do expect that it will continue to go down as our population in the city continues to age out. Once you don't pay taxes, or like homestead exemption, you fall off on that stormwater fee. So we do expect it to go down, and typically around $280,000 to $300,000 a year.
Good. May I have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? May I have the vote, please? Councilmember Seifert? Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Protem Robleski?
Aye.
Council President Shaw? Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next up, we have IT, Mr. Coley.
Uh, good evening. Tonight, I'm asking you to consider Resolution Number 2021-264-R, replacing our 15-year, 15-plus-year-old phone system with something new. Um, phone systems are a lot like oxygen. You don't know you need them until you don't have them. And unfortunately, we've had several ologies over the last month that have just proven how critical it is that we keep this operational at all times. So while we are, we have, we've taken great pains due to our research. We've researched over 60 different systems. We've demoed several. We've talked to people all over the country, several other counties, school systems, and municipalities that are using the same, um, solution that we're offering tonight. Basically, rather than investing in more hardware and more infrastructure here at the city that we have to maintain, and gives us a one point of failure in case we had some type of emergency at City Hall, fire, flood, tornado, something of that nature, we're going to a unified communications as a service. So that's a, that's a big mouthful. Basically, what it means is, we're going to have secure handsets on all desks, uh, that can extend the technology to laptops or desktops as necessary. We can also install an app on phones as necessary, so we are never without phone service, as long as we can provide internet access. The city has invested significantly over the last several years to bring in redundant internet access points of failure at multiple buildings throughout the city. So as long as we have access to some city facility or even cellular capabilities at some location, we can get our phone system back up and running. Um, we talk about transparency to the public, the ability to keep communications, 99.999% of the time to our public, I think is extremely important. Ring Central can offer us those five nines of availability is the best that you can purchase in the industry, so that means 99.99% of the time, or less than five minutes of year, less than five minutes a year of downtime. They back this up with an SLA financially. If we have more than five minutes of downtime in a year, we don't pay for that service that we lost and the time that we lost. Um, in addition, this is not just dial tone. This isn't just dial us in, we can dial you out. Um, it will replace Zoom as our ability to, um, do our web conferences, our video conferences. Every user, right now, we have 10 licenses that we pay for. This will be unlimited, as long as we have a seat license for that person, they'll have access to Zoom. So we have that ability to extend this to every department, and anybody who has a phone in the city will have the ability to contact, use video conferencing. In addition, um, I'm trying to give you guys more details than you could possibly want on this. I promise you, your eyes will glaze over when you get into the dark depths of phone systems. I want to just impress upon you how much research we've done on this and the features that we're trying to bring in. Um, it will also replace our fax capabilities that we have right now. So some departments pay for e-faxing, and you pay per fax, per page on those. So costs are hard to control when it comes to that, because depending on how they do it, we get charged per page. We also have to pay for cards to go in our copiers right now, the multifunction devices. We actually have to lease those cards that go in those copiers, and then you pay per page on those as well. With e-faxing, um, we scan a document into a computer, and we can send a fax. Once again, anybody with a phone on their desk will have this capability and functionality at no additional cost. Um, we'll have toll-free numbers available to us for the first time ever, where we can host our own conference bridge phones and toll-free availability as necessary. Uh, we have not had that before. Um, when we looked at public safety, one of the things we wanted to be sure we did was have some way to alert, uh, people in City Hall or city facilities, any city facility, for weather incidents, active shooter incidents, any emergency that we need to contact, we'll have overhead paging capabilities, but then we can also page to the phones themselves, uh, to the point where we can even barge calls. If it's, you know, an imminent threat, we can shut down phone calls if we have to, so that everybody gets the message of what's going on, including pop-ups on the screen. There's a lot of flexibility that we can have there, uh, to make sure that we're protecting those. Uh, there's a lot of other features I won't go into, but I'll be more than happy to answer any questions if you have those. Um, we do look at cost on this, and I do understand that it seems like a lot of money, and it is. Um, at first scratch, we went through the numbers and looked at what we're spending right now, just on five of these items that we're replacing. So that's our long distance, um, the circuits that we use to run dial tone, the support agreements we have to have on our current phones, and the Zoom licenses that we purchased. Those run about $5,200 a month. And now, we're asking to spend $3,054.40 per month on the phone system. So by my calculations, including the upfront costs that we have to do to replace all the phones, which are less expensive than the phones that we currently have to buy with our legacy phone system, uh, we'll have, at 15 months, we'll break even on the project, and then we'll start realizing the savings of about $2,000 a month to the city. So we see this as a cost-saving measure, with adding a whole lot more functionality, a whole lot more safety, and a, uh, we feel like a better end product and a good use of the taxpayer money.
Very good. Have a motion and a second, please.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions for Jason about the product? Just say thank you very much for your research on this. Very extensive. Thank, there being no dis...
I didn't, he's just telling...
Oh, okay. Uh, there being no more discussion, may we have the vote, please? Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Protem Robleski?
Aye.
Council President Shaw? Council President, I'm sorry, Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert? Thank you again. Motion passed. Next up, planning?
Ish.
Legal, yes, it's legal for planning. Pinch hitter.
Mary Beth is on vacation, and I'm presenting her easement vacations.
Good, thank you.
So the first item, though, it has to do with a Panera that's located on Route 72. And this is a resolution to set a public hearing. This is Resolution Number 2021-270. And what happened here is, when the Panera was first built, it was built under a zoning category that allowed a drive-through. But then, when there was a potential hospital project coming, the whole area was zoned medical center district, and that does not allow drive-throughs. So now, the property is about to change hands, and they discovered that this was, this was a quirk in the zoning that they needed to complete for the real estate transaction to go through. And so they have asked for the B3 zoning category to make sure that the drive-through is conforming. Last week, the Planning Commission heard this, and they voted for it unanimously, and we'd like to ask for your approval to set the public hearing, and that will be September 27th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? May we have the vote, please? Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Protem Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert? Motion passes.
And the next one is the second reading for Ordinance Number 2021-230. This is an ordinance to vacate a utility and drainage easement located in the Willow Creek subdivision. As you can see from the drawing, the easement that's proposed to be vacated is located in the backyard of the property owner's, um, house, and there, the whole backyard is essentially in a utility and drainage easement, but the owners want to construct a pool, and so they've asked for this easement vacation, and we'd like to ask for your approval tonight.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? There being none, may we have the vote, please? Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Protem Robleski?
Aye.
Council President Shaw? Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert? Motion passes.
And the last item is Ordinance Number 2021-249, and this is another easement vacation that the owner has requested, so that they can construct a pool in their yard. You can see the easement in the hatched area on the diagram on the screen, and this is just a first reading, and if you have any questions between now and the vote on the 13th, please let me or Mary Beth know.
Thank you. Great, thank you so much. Last up, recreation.
Well, you're my favorite person tonight. I'd like to let you know that.
Good to be last. Uh, I have Resolution 2021-267-R, approving change order number three for the Palmer Park Expansion Site Work Project with Edson Construction and Associates, in the amount of $20,000, $284.02. Um, basically, this project, uh, had a greenway planned along the creek bed, uh, on the, on the site. Um, since the project was designed, the creek channel has shifted, and we have to reroute the greenway. And the second item included in this was some seed and sand that we had for the, the project site that got flooded over the winter, and kind of washed that away, so we have to come back and...
Move to approve.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? May we have the vote, please? Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert? Council President Protem Robleski?
Aye.
Council President Shaw? Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Very good.